Hello and welcome to the Mid-Ohio Valley Video Podcast. This podcast features issues of interest to the residents of the Mid-Ohio Valley area, mainly encompassing Wood County, West Virginia, and Washington County, Ohio. Right now, with the coronavirus pandemic, civic life has changed greatly throughout our country.
One of the things that's changed is this is an election year. And I'm sorry, candidates would normally be campaigning, knocking on doors, attending fairs and festivals and soup and dinners. And they would be doing meets and greets and shaking hands, kissing babies. And they can't do any of that right now.
So many of our initial podcasts will feature interviews with candidates for local office. If you're a candidate and we haven't reached out to you yet, you can contact us either through our Facebook page at MOV Public Forum or by email, movpublicforum@gmail.com.
Today, we'll be interviewing Jeff Fox. Jeff is the current city council member for District 9, and he's running for reelection. District 9 is on the north end of Parkersburg. Welcome, Jeff. We're glad you could join us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Let's dive right in. How would you introduce yourself as a candidate? If we were in an elevator and you had just the time between floors to convince me to vote for you, what would you say?
Hi there. My name's Jeff Fox, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Parkersburg. Born and raised here, attended school in my district at Emerson-Hamilton, then went to PHS, graduated from West Virginia Tech and WVUP. And I have a real commitment to my neighborhood. Some people might laugh and say, "Boy, you've gone a long way in the last 57 years." But to me, it's been grounded at home where I was raised. I love this area, and I want to help make it better for you and everyone else.
So Jeff, what's motivating you to run for office again? What's the main thing that made you decide to step up and run for reelection right now?
Well, the last election, my councilperson was retiring, and I'd been one of those people that liked to write several letters to the editor. People were saying, "You know, you need to run for that seat." And I decided to do so. And I enjoy meeting new people. I enjoy walking around my district and just seeing how things are. And I want to continue that. You know, that's been very enjoyable. And yeah, a lot of it's discussing problems. But the idea is to work through that problem and try to fix a problem for people. I enjoy that.
What would you say is your wow factor? In other words, if someone heard this about you or your candidacy, they would say, "Wow, that makes me want to vote for him."
Well, I think that if I am the only current city councilperson not to have missed a meeting. And I'm dedicated to that. You know, I don't want to say it becomes some type of, oh, you know, crazy, "I can't miss anything ever." But you know, you gotta be there. You gotta show up. And if people know I'm representing them down at city council, but they also know, "Hey, we'll call him." And one of the things I always do on the phone, I say, "Look, we can talk about this, or if you'd like, I'll come out and, you know, we'll safely talk at your house now with social distancing, and I'll see your issue firsthand." So I'm there for people.
If you're reelected, Jeff, what is the one thing you'd really like to accomplish in your next term in office? Is there a current city ordinance you'd like to see changed or abolished or passed?
Well, one of the things I would like to see happen, and I've worked with our attorney, Joe Santor, on a piece of legislation that would help to inspire young college graduates to come back to Parkersburg and start their business here and live within city limits. And in return, the city would have a program to help them repay some of their student loan and also some of their college-educated employees to repay their student loan. And out of all the issues and problems we can talk about in our area, probably one of the biggest is our loss of population. We have to find a way to turn that around, to get people to move here, and especially people that can start a new company where the employees can get in on the ground floor and have a good shot of growing with that company.
How do you feel about compromise?
Well, I would like to think that I'm one of the strong compromisers on our current city council. And on a number of issues, I've tried to find the middle ground. And compromise is necessary to have progress. We can't go through every issue polarized and unwilling to bend. We have to bend to move forward.
So how well would you say you play with others? And can you give me some examples where you've had to do that on city council?
Well, there's been several issues. You know, one issue in particular comes to mind. At one point, part of our city council wanted to abolish the public forum on any topic which a citizen felt they wanted to speak to council about. And I thought that was very important to get that on the record. You know, you have your say. It's recorded. And then we'll see what the city does about it. And we actually lost that right for a short period of time. But through perseverance, eventually, we were able to get that turned around. And to me, you know, that's part of playing well with others. You know, I think in the end, everyone saw that, you know, "We need to listen to the citizens. That's our whole job."
What do you think your worst enemy would say is your worst quality?
My worst quality? Maybe... I don't know if it's a bad quality per se. I'm sure I have them. It's hard to look in the mirror and obviously see them. But, you know, I will grind it out. You know, if I believe in something, I will grind and grind and grind on that to try to get to some type of solution, whether it's in council or at work. You know, today, I'm an electrician, by the way. Shout out to my brothers and sisters in the IBW 968. But at quitting time today, I had one hot wire in a box, and I needed to find out where that wire was being fed from. That took me down underneath the school in a crawl space about four feet tall, which it's tough, an old man all bent over, walking around down there. But that's just it. I'm like, "I'm gonna grind this out. I'm not going home on the weekend until I know the answer." So I don't know. Maybe that's maybe not knowing when to say when, you know?
Well, the flip side of that is what do you think is your best quality?
I feel I'm reliable. I'm there for people. I love talking with folks. And one of the stories I like to tell is the night we were sworn in for this council, I never felt... You'd think I'd say I never felt so proud. I never felt so insignificant. And I'll describe that as because I know so many other people came before me and did this job, and I'll be gone, and there'll be plenty of other people. And so what that's allowed me to do is to understand that what we're doing is a governmental process, and there is no scorekeeping. I've had people, "Well, we lost another one." And I say, "Look, we didn't win. We didn't lose. There's no score here. It's a process we go through, and, you know, it plays itself out." And do I like the outcomes? Not always. But I think you just need to realize your role as part of, you know, part of the machine of council. You know, you get in there, you're a cog, you do your job, and, you know, you try to keep progressing.
So political officeholders are leaders. Describe your leadership style.
I would say I'm in the front. You know, a lot of the issues we discuss and some of the things we have to deal with, I like to bring a different way of looking at those issues or addressing those issues. As an example, you know, we needed to take action on the police and fire pensions and raise money to keep the old pension solvent while we moved into a new pension. And ultimately, we ended up just doubling the police and fire fees on everyone. But I brought other ideas. I brought ideas of, you know, potentially, we could have added a small surtax on our utilities to help fund that. And, you know, my thinking there was if a widowed elderly lady in my district is, you know, having her fee double is going to be a lot more than what her, you know, generally, small electric bill would happen, you know, when they added, you know, a percent to it. So I was looking for ways to spread that out without being too drastic. And, you know, so that's, I guess, I like to be in front, offering ideas. They don't often get accepted. But you know what? There's no wins or losses, you know? It's just a process.
What are your personal core values?
I think the main one is treat others the way that you would like to be treated. And, you know, there's all kinds of jobs in our area, and I respect those that do the dirty work. And, you know, and that kind of goes along with working hard and also helping others. And just being straightforward, you know, telling honesty, sometimes blunt honesty. But, you know, it's the easiest way. You know, if you let people know exactly where you stand, then, you know, they may not like it, but at least they understand where you're coming from, so.
Do you know your win number?
Oh, I'm gonna say my win number, you know, based upon the totals from last election, is around 800. So, but, you know, I'll take more.
What do you see as the main role of a city councilperson in a strong mayor model city like Parkersburg?
Well, obviously, this goes back to what we talked about earlier, some compromise. You know, we have to work with the administration. And, you know, one of our most important jobs is presenting a responsible budget for the city. And also, when things arise. For instance, we do not know where we're going to be after our city's essentially been shut down for most of March, all of April, part of May. And we passed a budget in March, but obviously, we need to revisit that. So being a little bit of, you know, that watchdog on the budget, and then also trying to hear the citizens whenever we're making ordinance changes or things like that. You know, we need to understand what their feelings are and make sure that we try to address everyone, you know, all levels of our citizenry and not just people in certain places.
What do you think you will enjoy the least about serving in the next term if you're reelected?
Well, I do think that we are going to have to take a look at how we operate due to this pandemic. You know, people say it's a once-in-a-lifetime event, but who knows? And so there's probably going to have to be some decisions made in next year's, the budget we approved this year for next year. You know, that will be unpopular or, you know, but that's one of those hard, straightforward things you have to do sometimes. So that's what I see as, you know... Like I said, I treat it as a process, but sometimes you do have to do things that you're not thrilled to do.
What excites you most about serving on city council?
That's actually a pretty easy one, and that's whenever someone calls me. And, you know, I live alone, so the social distancing thing has been easy for me, pretty much. But when someone calls, "Oh, yeah, I'm ready." You know, "Want me to come up?" "Fine, I'll come up and check this out." And, you know, I learn from people. That excites me, is the fact they enlighten me maybe about an issue. Or all of a sudden, we talked about the issue. Now, we're going to talk about neighborhood history a little bit. And, you know, our neighborhoods have some pretty interesting and impressive histories. And so just that rapport with the citizens, that excites me.
As a citizen of Parkersburg, what are you most proud of about our city?
Well, I think it's our working-class background. I mean, from things I've read, 100 years ago, we were a pretty rough-and-tumble town in this and that. But, you know, we became the place where manufacturing wanted to be. And, you know, I think, you know, unfortunately, a place like O.Ames is not here anymore. But this is a place founded in the 1700s and, you know, forging steel into implements for the rest of the country to use. And I think that's a pretty good analogy of all our workers. I'll go through my district, and I have, as you both well know, a lot of our city is older and they're retired. And, you know, I'll talk with them about where they worked. "Oh, I worked at..." You know, "This person worked at Corning Glass for 20, 20-some years." And, you know, someone else worked at Borg Warner or DuPont or, you know, some places, you know, like Borg Warner doesn't even exist now. It's just a field. But, you know, I think that those people and the influx of population in the '40s and the '50s made our city what it is. And, you know, I'm proud of that. I'm proud that the people that made our city what it is did so, working hard.
Tell us what political accomplishment you are most proud of.
Well, as I mentioned, you know, other than getting elected, you know, I'm certainly proud that people selected me and hopefully will do so again. But, you know, getting that public forum back open again, you know, for everyone as far as things we do on council, that meant so much to me. And it had to be a little bit strategic. You know, I've never gone to a meeting looking and wondering, "Oh, when's this gonna be over? I got somewhere to go." Tuesday nights, the second and fourth Tuesdays, they're blocked off. It's council night. And, you know, I'll get down there. I'll stay as long as we need to stay, you know? I'm not even looking for any hot wires in an electrical box. But you know what I mean? So, you know, being able to sit there and listen to what people have on their mind and allow themselves to get those issues on the official record, you know, that makes me proud.
So tell us about the toughest issue you had to deal with during this term in office.
Well... That's a good one there. Like I say, it's part of the process. Obviously, you know, some issues were protracted out over greater lengths of time. You know, doubling the police and fire fees, that was a tough issue because I just get the feeling that a lot of people in our town are, you know, they're working hard to keep what they have and keep a home rented or buy a home or fix up a home. I mean, and, you know, anytime we, as a city, have to say, "Well, you know, we're gonna need more." You know, that's a tough thing. But, yeah, that seemed to be kind of a sticky one, definitely. And obviously, you know, the nondiscrimination ordinance was a protracted issue with a lot of debate coming from both sides. But, you know, it went through the process. And I guess that's how I keep... Keep, you know, don't get too excited or too depressed. You're just part of the process, you and eight other people. And, you know, so, you know, having to ask for more money, that's never easy.
How do you see a council member's job changing in the post-COVID-19 world?
Well, I think that... I think we're going to have to, you know, we already do a fairly good job funding our police and fire departments. And of course, our sanitation workers are on the front line as well. You know, not to say they're not at more risk now, but they're always at risk. You know, I kind of marvel at a lot of things they walk into. And of course, the same goes for our police and fire when they respond to calls and, you know, walking into the unknown. But, you know, we understand, you know, we've seen shortages in protective equipment and gear and things of that nature specifically for this issue of a virus. So, you know, going forward, we can be better prepared there. You know, right now, we just voted on how to use some of the relief funding from the federal government. Some of it going to citizens in need to pay rent or pay utility bills or things of that nature. Some of it going to businesses with an emphasis on keeping that business open so it can continue to employ local citizens. And, you know, we'll see what else comes forward. But, you know, there's the physical side of things where you must physically protect our workers and our public. And then there's also that economic side of things, which there's so much, you know, ongoing debate about that is well right now. But, you know, ultimately, the public will be the ones to decide when things really open, if you want to use that terminology, you know? You each will decide where you want to go and what you want to do and who you want to be around. And, you know, it's important to stay informed and, you know, follow the doctor's rules. You know, I've been lucky to be on jobs where I was the only person in the facility. And so I didn't have a lot of, you know, any type of cross-contamination or people coming and going. I mean, it was a good peace of mind to have during this current situation, knowing, "I'm going to work. I might see one other person at work today." And, you know, and we're not, you know, we stay the distances apart. And, you know, but you're right. We're going to have to be ready. I don't think any of us really thought about that. You know, as this council, we did set aside a fund for these types of problems, you know, for any unforeseen problems. And I think it's easy to think that you're going to run into some type of infrastructure problem, like a covert could collapse on a city route, not a state route or a federal route. And then all of a sudden, we've got to fix this thing. And, you know, anytime you're in the ground, it's gonna cost a ton of money. But, you know, we didn't, we probably didn't foresee this situation where we're, you know, we're going to have to see how, you know, how the health of our citizens, that outcome, the revenue that the city brings in to run on, and the economy of our citizens, you know, how are they going to be able to get through this? And I think we're trying to address things and kind of fill them out. And I believe that, you know, I'll be ready to pivot and try some new things if we have to.
Well, with that, we'll move to the hot seat. One or both of us, usually both, have been present at nearly every single city council meeting since the current city council was sworn in. We've noticed that a lot of what the council does is routine and therefore not of much interest to the public. We've also noticed that a lot of issues that come up in council are not controversial and are resolved by a unanimous or nearly unanimous vote.
But there were several issues come up during this council term that generated a lot of public interest and controversy and divided the council. So for the most part, these issues have been resolved for the moment, but they can always come back up. So we'd like to get your take on these briefly.
So for this purpose, we'll use a support, not support, or support with changes format. Here we go. Nondiscrimination ordinance. Non-discrimination ordinance.
Well, I would say a support with changes on that. And we'll, we'll just have to, you know, like I said, it's a process. And you know, what, what happens on one vote? And, and this is on anything, any issue is, you know, it, it, things can always come back. And, and then it's, it's into the, the nuts and bolts of reading through the proposed legislation. I, you know, so.
Motorized bicycle ban.
Not support. And a little bit of that is, I don't, I don't see it as a ban. I don't see, I think that's the, the state's role to decide. They're the ones that have the current rules in place that we are going with. And I under, I know it's been frustrating for some members of our, of, of the city and, and some of the citizens. So I would like to think somewhere in between, there's, there's a way to administrate, regulate, I guess, some, these, these bicycles without saying, no, you cannot have these bicycles at all. That's a compromise somewhere in there.
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
Well, and that's one of those that, you know, we, we all supported. But ultimately, I brought other ideas to the table. They weren't accepted for, for the police and fire, you know, for, and that was for the pension. But I, you know, obviously we want the police fire department to be, you know, to be well, well-funded with all the equipment they need for the public safety and for their own safety. And, and then, you know, our, our trash collection, it's, it's kind of connected to what the, you know, what the dump. We, we have a rate that we, we pay at the dump. And if they go, if it goes up, then you know, potentially, we may have to raise those fees. But you know, once again, it's, it's in the details. And it's, I would, I guess I would support, you know, support with changes. You know, we, we'd have to go through and, and prove to me the necessity of this. And then what's the best way we can do it? You know, as far as not having too much of a impact on, on, you know, someone on a fixed income.
Financial support for Parkersburg homecoming and other civic events.
Well, and that's, that, you know, we do, we do fund several different events throughout the year. And unfortunately, a lot of them aren't going to, to be able to occur. I want, I, I want people to understand that, you know, we do make those monetary donations. But those events are not, you know, they're not city events. This, this, you know, the city isn't so much in the event planning and staging type thing. And you know, private organizations put forth different events. And we, we have traditionally funded them to, to different degrees. But also, we provide the in-kind support of our, you know, sanitation, streets department, police, fire, electrical department. And those are, those are in-kind, uncharged donations by the city that, that, that really, you know, build, build up. I mean, it's, it's nothing to get into the tens of thousands of dollars alone in, in, you know, the, the man hours spent helping provide support to various events throughout our area.
A fireworks ban.
Uh, I, I don't, I do not support that. We, we did try to give a window, a timeframe of when would be legal to set off fireworks. As you both know, fireworks are illegal in the city right now. You're not allowed to set off fireworks. But at the same time, I think last summer, we celebrated a, a store that opened up cut the ribbon that sold fireworks. So that's, that's one of those issues where, okay. But you know, it's, it's a long, longstanding tradition on certain holidays, patriotic holidays to enjoy the fireworks. And I don't think anyone wants to ban them, but we do want it, you know, I do want it done safely. You know, so, so I don't, I don't support a ban, but I do support some type of legislation that, that kind of corrals them in, into a, a certain timeframe and certain days and, and within certain hours, you know?
Splash pad project.
Splash pad project. I remember that one. I, I would, I would, I, I guess I have to say, I initially, I, I support it. Because and, and then through, through the use of compromising with my fellow legislators, I, I've been able to fund amenities to the overall project, you know? As it stood alone, I did not like the idea of a splash pad being built next to an eighty-year-old pool. We needed to do something to the pool. I, I met with the parks department, I walked through the pool house. It was renovated in, in the early nineteen nineties. And as you might think, there's, there's not a lot to a pool house, really. It's a, it's a pretty utilitarian structure. You know, a couple dressing rooms and the pumps that filter the, and, and things like that. But it needed work. The, the concrete around our pool was cracked. Obviously, the pool didn't have the attractions. And I, I looked an awful lot at Mary, Marietta, the Marietta Aquatic Center and how much they spent on that. And in no, no way did I want to spend that much money. But at the same time, you know, we're the largest city in the area. And so we're looking at Marietta and then, then all of a sudden Athens opened Zirz up. And I believe Athens spent nearly over six million dollars on their aquatic area. And so all of a sudden, you know, it's like, well, let's, let's invest in our, in our pool. Overall, the total package project is what, you know, what I want to support.
A social media or code of conduct policy.
Well, I, I'd sent one to, to Mr. Sander to review. I did that in March of twenty nineteen and it's there. It, obviously it hasn't been passed. I, I, Jennifer, I think you may have mentioned it once or twice.
Just a few times.
But you know, I, I, I would support it. And, but you know, here's the thing about, obviously about elected officials is short of breaking the law and being, being jailed or sent to prison where you cannot fulfill the duties of your office, that the only ones that can take you out are the people that put you in, you know? So, and they'll, they'll have their chance to have a say this, this primary and this general election. But you know, I, I support, I support that policy, you know? I support the social media policy.
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
Uh, I support. I think that's, that's one of, I, I see a couple from my backyard, a couple dumpsters. And you know, I, I haven't had a lot of problem with people coming and pilfering through the dumpsters or anything like that, which I know can be a huge problem. But at the same time, so can not, not dumping your dumpster on a timely enough basis. We don't want to pay for an extra dumping this week. Therefore, all of a sudden, you have, the lids are being held up in the air by, by trash bags. And then the next thing you know, they're getting ripped open, things blowing around the neighborhood. And you know, so I, I think some sort of, you know, enclosure to help to try to corral some of that trash, but also to keep people out of them. I think that's, that's important.
Residential property cleanup.
Well, I, I think, you know, obviously a lot of that is through our code department. But I've, I've also volunteered with several different groups doing residential cleanups in different areas out, you know, around the city. We did one at, at Southwood Park, we did, we've done them at, around the Pink Church. And but one of the things I proposed to the mayor was to, to, let's fund a, like a cargo trailer, a small cargo trailer and it be a, a mobile community tool shed. Whereas you, you know, there's a certain area of town or your neighbor, or your district that, you know, we, we need to get people together, get on the street. We can, we can mow grass at several of these houses. And, and I go, I go back to something the mayor often says, like, you know, yeah, the responsibility lies with the homeowners to take care of their property. But ultimately, you know, as a group of volunteers to go do it, we're not doing it so much for maybe a, a out-of-state property owner that, that doesn't take care of their properties. We're doing it for everyone else that lives on the street. And I think that some of those would get involved and do so. And you know, you, you mentioned I'm north end, so I have a lot, a lot of border that is out of city limits and in, in some of the stuff in city limits is overgrown. Like if you travel along Lakeview Drive, you know, that's, that's private property over to the right-hand, the right-hand side as you head towards Murdoch. But that, you know, it, it tends to overgrow and, and grow into the streets. And you know, I've, I understand there's, you know, potential legal ramifications. But it, you know, if you could get, get volunteers, bring the cargo trailer over on a Friday night, the, the, the person that signed it out with the city has the key. People meet on a Saturday morning, you work from nine to one, you load everything back up, lock up the trailer and then, and then it goes on to the next group, you know? I, I, I don't know, I, I, I'm a big believer in, in helping, you know, helping, obviously helping folks that can't physically do this. And, and I, I can give you several constituents where I've been, you know, chipping ice that was six inches thick on their street, one, one elderly lady, I can't get my car gets hung up. The rest of the street's plowed, but this water flow in front of my driveway keeps building and building and building. It's an ice pack. So I went, you know, I went down there with a, with a, a matic and a, and a spud bar and I got my workout for the day, you know? But, but that, that's what I, I, it's not just me, I'm not saying, look what I did. I think there's other people out there that will band together and do things like that. More so than just, you know, not, there's nothing wrong picking up trash, that's a big deal too. But you know, the city's mowing three hundred, three hundred empty lots we mow. And it's, it's just a crazy amount. And you know, so, and there's other properties that we don't own that need mowed. So that, that's my point in residential property cleanup. I think code has plenty of tools right now. The code department has plenty of the legal tools necessary to go out and, and work with folks on that.
Well, with that, we've come to our wildcard question section and these are super easy softballs. So what's your favorite thing or place in our city?
Well, I could give you a big fluffy answer here. But I'll, 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 the first thing that comes to my mind, like I said, I was born and raised in my district. And you know, up, up above me, you know, there's Evergreen Cemetery that always has the, the cross lit on holidays throughout the years. And, and you know, just, but next to that's Woodland Park. Going, going for a walk through my district and, and, and riding my bike as a kid and just, just thinking, just all the, the reminiscing about all the things and, and just going for a walk and up the hill and, you know, oh, I remember these people, they built this house, you know? And now it's had three or four different owners. But you know, it's great to reminisce and, and you know, going, going through a walk through, through the district.
So Jeff, what are you personally passionate about?
Uh, you mean other than representing my constituents to the best of my possible ability? No, I, I, I like, I like music and, and I, I do, I help with live, live events, performances and DJ. And, and I, a lot of times, it's, it's just a charitable cause. I, I DJed, just volunteered my time DJed when they opened the splash pad. I've done events with, multiple events with the Children's Home Society. DJed for the, for the folks that put together the National Night Out for the police and first responders. For the special needs class at PHS, I've DJed their, their alternative prom for the kids that don't get to go to prom. We do a prom in the afternoon. What at all? Where I was today working, I'm working at my grade school, Emerson. And, and so I'm, I'm underneath the school looking for that hot wire, remember? In places I never knew existed when I was a little kid. But anyway, so that several teachers were coming and going and they're like, oh, you're the dance guy. And I go, well, you know, I, I don't dance, but I make the kids dance. And, and you know, so, so it's just fun, I'm passionate about that. I like to golf some, I like to backpack and hike, I love baseball, you know? And but, but, but having those opportunities to volunteer and, and help with things, you know, that's, I find, I find a reward in that, you know?
Is it a side benefit of the shirt that it's in Orioles colors?
Well, yeah, I'd have threw that one too.
What do you like to do in your off time? You just covered that one.
I covered a lot of that. You know, and, you know, I, I like, I like to go over to Worthington and walk, play golf and a lot of times by myself, it's a great time to think. I walk when I play and gives you time to think and get a little exercise in. But you know, kayaking, fishing, going to the mountains. Got a lot to go to the mountains and just go for a drive. My, my brother and I, after my father passed away, we, we would get together and we'd leave at like four o'clock in the morning so we could be over in somewhere around past Elkins when the sun came up. And, and just, just wander around and it, it just brought back memories, you know? We, we didn't go on fancy vacations growing up, we would go to We would go to, we'd go over to Sturt's Park and, you know, s- stay at some little motor lodge, you know, and, and just wander around and look at things, you know. And, and so I, I still enjoy to do that, you know. I like to eat too, you can't see my belly.
So Jeff, what is most unique about you?
Well, I think that, that I've worn, worn a lot of hats, you know. I, I started working at, at a grace, I started working, mowing grass like a lot of kids do. I never got an allowance. So, so I'm, I'm working and I like getting that money. Then I, then I went to work at Penny Fair, which is where the Piggly Wiggly on Emerson Avenue is now. I joined the union when I was 15 years old. And, you know, I worked there for several years, and then it changed ownership into a food land. And I continued to work there and go to school. Then I got into the IBW. I never, I never knew I'd work construction, but my brother was a, was a plumber and pipe fitter at local 565. My dad was a united steel worker across the river at Union Carbide Plastics. So, you know, I guess that's what foxes do, they work, so. And, and so what I do in, in, within my local, I, I decided, well, I'd like to be recording secretary, no one wants that job, you know. But, you know, so I did that for several years, then I said, well, I'd like to be president. So I was president of our local, did that for several years. And then, then I got to be the business manager, financial secretary that ran our local union. And, you know, I was responsible for over 200 members and over 200 retirees and everything from contracts to health insurance to pensions to apprenticeship training school, all these things. I mean, I, I was pretty, pretty adept at that. And then, then, you know, I, I ended up, I went back to work with, with my tools and, and I worked as a consultant for, for a local electrical contractor. And, and so I guess that my unique thing is I've, I've tried to always be flexible with my, with my career and try, you know, if, if an opportunity, opportunity presents itself to, to try something new, then, then I, I want to try it. And, and that's probably what drove me to run for council the first time. I mean, I, I, I just enjoy it. I mean, last year, I was the only city council person that was on personnel committee, finance committee, public works committee, and the stormwater committee, you know. So I, I just liked being a part of those things.
My dad's a steel worker too, so I, I didn't know he had that in common.
Well, I tell you what, you know, my dad went through some severe health problems and, and they stuck with him, they stuck with him to the bitter end. And, and they, I mean, I'll, I'll share this, you know, he's passed away now. But I, we went through three, three years each year with a 10-hour-plus surgery. And then just these terribly tough recovery times. And, and that, that, you know, his, his, his retirement covered him with two, two medical plans and Medicare. And, and, and I'm telling you, it's not, it's not what you get now. It's what you have for your future when you're not going to be able to work like a, like a wild person. And, you know, you have to have the, those, you know, that support, that, that retirement support and that pension support. And, and, you know, I would love to see us grow our city. We, we, you know, and, and grow it with jobs that have a pension and healthcare and a retirement. That's how we get, that's how we get, you know, that's how you get back to Norman Rockwell's America.
Well, with that, I feel like we've learned quite a bit about you. If you feel like there's anything else we've missed or that you want to make sure you tell voters, now's your time to let us know where to get in touch with you, to find information on your campaign. Donate, get involved, et cetera.
Well, I probably, probably like a lot of candidates, Facebook is one of the easiest places. Fox for Parkersburg District Nine is my page. And I try to keep everyone abreast with council agendas and other common information from the area. I've been trying to post whatever the Mid High Valley Health Department has been posting during the pandemic. Just to, you know, in, in, the more you can share these things, the better, you know, the more people learn. But, you know, Fox for Parkersburg District Nine and, and 304-428-7732 to contact me. You know, I, as you can tell, I'm always ready to talk. And you, you may be saying, oh, I shouldn't have called him.
Well, Jeff, we have enjoyed talking with you this evening. Thank you so much for joining us for this podcast, and folks, wash those hands.
Absolutely. Thank you.